I would like to call the regular scheduled meeting for Fairfield County Council to order. Monday, February 26, 2024 at 6:00 PM, Wentzboro, South Carolina. Next, if everyone could please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Next, we are down to item three, approval of the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and properly segmented. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero on the approval of the agenda. Item four, invocation, Councilman Mr. Roseborough.
I pray for this meeting tonight, Father. Give us the wisdom and guidance as we deliberate on items set before us. May every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and your glory. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Roseborough. Now, we are down to approval of minutes. We will do all three of these at one time. Regular meeting, January 22, 2024. Regular meeting, February 12, 2024. And a special call meeting, January 31 of 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and properly segmented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero on approval of the minutes. Now, we are down to item six. And Mr. Andrew Bateman was unable to make it this evening. But we have with us Jim Stritzinger from the Director of Broadband Office. From time to time, council receives emails or at meetings, people, citizens inquiring about broadband in Fairfield County and what we could do to make sure all of Fairfield County is insured with broadband. So I reached out to the broadband office and glad to have Mr. Stritzinger here with us tonight. But thank you.
Testing, okay, there we go. Chairman Polly, thank you so much for the invitation to be here. Members of council, Fairfield County staff, it's a pleasure to be here. Again, my name is Jim Stritzinger. I'm the Director of the South Carolina Broadband Office. I brought some slides tonight, but in short, my job is to make sure every citizen of South Carolina has internet service. So I'm going to walk you through kind of a little bit about the broadband office, a little background, and I'm going to focus in on Fairfield County to give you an update. So first thing I wanted to do, I hope you all can see the slides. I wanted to introduce you to my team in Columbia. So we have a very small staff of dedicated, super talented, dedicated employees of the Office of Regulatory Staff. So again, my agency director, his name is Andrew Bateman, he was not able to be here tonight, but that's my team. We have a wonderful team, expert in mapping. That's a very big part of what we do is working with GIS to make things go. And we've been an award-winning team as well. We've had some very special awards in 2023. And we're about to be published in the Esri map book coming up. So Councilwoman Green, I thank you so much for working with our office over the years. So let me, let me talk to you a little bit about our maps and how they work. We try to update the state pretty much every six months. And our strategy has been, the South Carolina General Assembly allocated $400 million to the broadband office in May of 2022. And we've been working our way through that, but instead of investing all the money at once, we've been very measured and very planned with that. And our strategy has been to map the state, understand where we have service and where we don't. And then we break up the money and we've awarded in a grant program. So that's the principal role of the broadband office is to award money to internet service providers through the delivery of grants. And then we make sure the grants all get executed and construction completes. But we map the state, then we make investments. We map and we invest, and that's been our philosophy for how we approach broadband in the state of South Carolina. This particular map is called our planning map. It's a look-forward map, but you can see on this map the places that we've made investments. So the yellow spots on the map are places where the broadband office has control of those investments. You can see we've invested all over the state. Each of the yellow areas are very carefully crafted puzzle pieces, if you will, that drop into unserved areas of the state. The blue areas are places where the federal government has invested in the state of South Carolina. We don't have control of those investments, but we pay careful attention to where they are because it's a big waste of money to overbuild those areas or to make investments in the same spots. But kind of key to all of this is understanding that the investment happens first and then the construction occurs. And I know it's frustrating to be a resident when you have an investment in your area and you wonder, when am I going to get internet service? But it could, the projects that we invest in can take up to two years to be constructed. So this is a statistics slide that we try to keep updated. This is actually dated almost a year ago now, but we pay careful attention to the number of unserved homes. The, the black area on this screen represents the current condition of the state as of March 2023. The green area represents the investments and the differential that'll be obtained. And the blue area is where we project the state will be. And you can see this map is, or this statistics slide has projections through the very, very bottom of the screen. The blue bar projects us down to December 31, 2024. So the long and short of it is, is on this previous map, anywhere that's blue or yellow will be turning green by the end of this year. So that's how we, that's how we track the state. All of the state broadband maps are available on SC Digital Drive. We keep them updated as they, as we make investments in the maps, and you're all free to go out there. All the maps are free and they will come to you in the format of PowerPoint slides. So you can easily consume them and use them in your own presentations along the way. All 46 counties are mapped, and we also have some interactive tools. So you can actually type in street addresses and zoom in on your home to see what's going on. The broadband office has gone through incredible growth over the last couple of years. I started in my role as State Broadband Director in July of 2021, when the office was first created by the General Assembly. And we had a humble $30 million budget when I started. Less than two years later, July of 2023, our budget grew to a full billion dollars. So it's a crazy amount of money to ramp up inside state government and have that responsibility. But the good news is we have enough money to connect every single home in South Carolina. So if we haven't gotten you yet, guess what? There's plenty of money to, to make sure that we get that for everybody. Wow, I got this slide down to an I chart. This, this represents the amount of money that's been invested. I'm sorry, I can't even read it. I'm standing too far away. It's about $7 million has been invested in Fairfield County of, of dollars coming from my office. But in parallel with that, the federal government has also invested into Fairfield County with both FCC Rural Digital Opportunity Funds and Charter has been the recipient of that. Some of you may have noticed Charter constructing. And also True Vista was a recipient of USDA reconnect funds in Fairfield County. So that's what was on, blue on the map. I'm going to talk specifically. We just opened a new grant program on February 12th. We call it ARPA 3.0. We are, we are working to deploy the balance of our $400 million from the General Assembly. We have about $40 million left to get deployed. And for those of you that have been in the, in the weeds with the SLFRF funds, you know that those funds need to be fully committed by December 31, 2024. And then there's another two years for construction. So we are working our tails off to get those dollars committed. I want to zoom in on Fairfield County. And I have, I gave you all a copy of this map to kind of refer to, and I'm going to walk you through it to show you where specifically investments have been made. And also for residents that are here, I left some extra copies of this map by the table near the agendas where they were out for everybody. But on this map, I'll just kind of walk you through it. The, the blue areas on the map are places where the federal government has made investments in Fairfield County. You can see those, they're very much are puzzle pieces being dropped in. The yellow areas are places where we've made investments since the inception of the broadband office. The, I want to focus next on the, the red areas. The South Carolina General Assembly asked us to prioritize where we put our investments. These areas represent areas with a lot of K-12 students. So we want to make sure those areas get connected first. And you can see the, the number of the dots, the green dots are the individual, what we call broadband serviceable locations. So you can see the homes that we're focused on. And some of the areas look pretty big, but there's a remaining few, relatively few numbers. Those are known as partially served blocks. So the orange areas are certainly places where we need some investments. Those are fully unserved areas of Fairfield County. The orange are the partially served areas. And that's how the map crunches down. Numbers wise, and I'm going to step over so I can see this real quick. In total, we have 1,921 broadband serviceable locations that remain in Fairfield County. It's not a large number of homes. We think we can get that done. And that, that equates to a unit count of about 2,300 homes. The reason the difference, in some cases, you have what's called a multiple dwelling unit or an apartment complex. So one dot might equate to 10 apartments. That's why there's a difference between the broadband serviceable locations and the unit count. But that is what Fairfield County looks like. From a timeline perspective, you can take a look at this map and see what we're doing. We call it ARPA 3.0. We're trying to get that wrapped up and get those funds committed by June 30. And we're doing that while at the same time planning for the next major tranche of broadband investment. So we have another $551 million that will be coming to South Carolina, really, really beginning to flow in the latter part of 2025. So that's what's up. The name of that program for the $551 million is called the BEED program. If you haven't heard of it already, you will be. It's not just South Carolina. All 50 states and U.S. territories are working to deploy that money. So we're going to be doing that a lot in 2025. And I'm going to conclude my comments there, but I'd be happy to take any questions, any members of council would have.
Thank you so much for being here. Any council members have any questions? I got a, I got a question for you, and maybe I missed it. And I don't want to, like, put you on a timeline.
Sure.
But, but how much of Fairfield County, would you say 60%, 70%?
If my memory is correct, I think there's roughly 8,000 locations in total in Fairfield County.
And if you had to say a time for all of Fairfield County to be covered, two years, four years? And I'm not going to hold you to it, but...
Well, and of course, I can't predict that. So it's important for everybody to understand too, as the broadband office, we have to open up a fair and competitive grant program. So we take applicants from all over the, all over the United States have the ability to build into South Carolina. So when we open up the map, and I just showed you the eligibility map for Fairfield County, we're counting on a grant applicant to raise their hand and say, I'd like to build out Fairfield County. So as council members, what you can do is encourage your local ISPs and others that might be interested in coming into Fairfield County to apply for grants to get, to get those dollars. And that's what really dictate when it gets done.
Right. But it, but it's nothing, and I hate to say nothing, but as far as us reaching out to the broadband office, we can't, we can't speed it up no faster than, than what you're doing, correct?
That's right. What it counts, we, we need applicants to say, we want to knock out Fairfield County. I, I do think as the state gets, there are fewer and fewer remaining broadband serviceable locations in the state, so I think Fairfield County is going to get a lot of attention in the next couple of years to get this done. And we are, I will say this, you know, American Rescue Plan dollars were designed to get the country out of COVID as a response to the COVID emergency. The, the BEED dollars are designed to connect every single home in the United States. And President Biden was onstage June 26th at the White House and just kind of compelled everybody to try to connect every house by 2030. So, yeah, I think, you know, and of course, we don't want it to take that long. There's a lot of students that really need help now getting their homework done, and we're fully aware of that.
Thank you so much for being here. Ms. Green has got a question for you.
Can you explain a little bit about South Carolina Digital Drive and what capabilities that, digitaldrive.org and what capabilities that has for citizens?
Absolutely. So we, this is our place where we put all of the broadband maps online. We're adding to it all the time, but as we update the maps, that's where you can go to get them. It's a self-service, it's a free service. You can pull down maps, but there's also interactive tools. So if a resident is really struggling to get internet at their own house, we have, there's a consumer tab on SC Digital Drive where you can say, I need internet at my house. You can actually fill out a survey, put your street address in. And then we try to, behind the scenes, we try to connect the dots between the resident that needs service and the internet service provider that's internet providing it. We do that matchmaking on the back end, but we do it with the resident's permission. So that's important. If you don't have services to get your name on that list, we do track that. But yes, and there's a lot of other really interesting tools. There's tools for elected officials. You can see your, your service areas with details on, you know, your constituents, how many are lacking service and things like that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
If I'm to understand correctly, if there are schoolchildren that do not have access to broadband now, if their parents go to scdigitaldrive.org and get their name on the list?
That will help, yes.
That will help.
Yes. And we've already got the, the locations, the, the priority areas, the red, I call them the red freckles. The red freckles are the priority areas in Fairfield County, and we're trying to cover those up with investments as soon as possible. And we would hope to get those done by have investments in place June 30. That's our, that would be our goal. But I can't guarantee it, of course. We can't, you know, we have to stand up a program and wait for grant applicants. But our job, with every grant that we put out there, we are connecting at least one priority service area.
I live up in the northwestern part of the county, and it's all in blue. But there's not...
Well, that would mean there's, there's an investment in place, but the, the construction may not have completed yet, but there is federal funding in place, and that's already attached to an internet service provider. So you should be seeing some action.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you so much for being here.
Absolutely.
We appreciate the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Next, we are down to number seven, first public comment session. Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. John Jones.
John Jones, District Four. First reading by title only, an ordinance of adopting the comprehensive plan for Fairfield County, South Carolina, and other matters related thereto. It was so ethereal. There was no substance to that comment. I started digging into it like all good citizens should to find out what that comprehensive plan is. Oh my goodness, it's a monster. The average voter isn't going to look at this thing and understand 10% of it. It's ridiculous. And Fairfield citizens, you need to do just that. This is your government. If you don't get involved, it's on you. All right, so I started looking at this thing to see what, exactly what was in it. And it's so non-substantive, it's unbelievable. Goals and strategies. Facilitate an ongoing council-led strategic planning process and evaluate and prioritize comprehensive plan goals and strategies. And? If you break down comprehensive plan, comprehensive means a large scope, bringing in many resources and such. Okay. Plan. A detailed proposal for doing or achieving something. There is no plan here. There's none. Comprehensive, yeah. No plan on how to accomplish these things. Another item. Your solid waste collection? Your fire protection? Something near and dear to me, considering four of my neighbors' houses are burnt to the ground. Fire protection is provided by Fairfield County through volunteer community fire departments with a full-time county fire chief. These services are provided through annual tax mileage assessments for operations and capital improvements. Individual fire departments also engage in periodic fundraising activities. Where's your plan? Where's the plan that's supposed to go with this comprehensive thing that I'm holding? The sheriff's department? Ah, stuck. We can always move on to something else. Ah, here's a good one. Rail transit. Rail service to the metropolitan area includes both passenger and freight. Okay, how do we capitalize on that? There is no plan. There's no plan. Every single one of these categories that I looked at, wow, they were comprehensive. There was no plan on how to implement, how to profit from it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Don Goldbach.
Good evening, council. Don Goldbach, District Two. And I would like to address the agenda item on IRS penalties. And first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Chairman for adding that to the agenda this evening. And also thank you for the conversation we had a little over a week ago. Really appreciate that. So what we citizens would like to hear about this IRS situation, there's just a few basic questions I'd like to pose, and hopefully we get the answers this evening. And what was the problem that caused five years of violations? And was it a people problem? Was it a process problem, procedure problem? What, what failed in our systems that caused five years of violations? And if we don't know the answer to that, what's being done to find the answer? Are we going to do a forensic audit, for example? Are we relying on our new administrator? I mean, what's, what's the process for finding the problem? And then, again, finding a plan to fix the problem? And the, really, the other question is, has to do with any, has any challenge been taken against these violations? And it was actually six years of violations, as from the information I received. There was 2017, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22. But apparently, the previous finance director, Ms. Bass, had challenged the 2018 penalties and successfully got those eliminated. So is anybody currently challenging the, the other years? I don't know. Can they be challenged at this point? So that's another question I'd like to have answered. Have we contacted, for, for example, Congressman Norman? You know, is there any help at his office? You know, is there any help that his office can give us, give the county to challenge these these fines? So these are just basic questions, I think, that a lot of citizens have about, you know, this whole situation. So hopefully, we can get those answers soon. Thank you for your time.
Ann Carrero.
It's good, though. Good evening to all present. The Ten Year Comprehensive Plan was released for public viewing on Monday, February 19th. We are one week out, and during this session, we'll only touch a tip of the iceberg. In reviewing this document and speaking with fellow constituents, so much is left to question, as it is realized that this took years to come to the table. In being late, the county is again silently expecting the citizens to be patient, while that patience is running thin. This is a case with this plan, the economic plan, and the audit. In researching, one can see the economic plan has produced nothing of substance with no measurable results. The only positive merit of substance is the concrete plant purchased years ago. This department had two staff members who have both vacated their positions in the last year. The latter vacated only a few months ago. Is this department in disarray, and what is being done to replace necessary positions per competency? When addressing the audit, one understands that certain state agencies are dependent on the audit, and without it, the state starts withholding available monies. Some will target the auditor, but common sense dictates that the auditor is at the mercy of the county providing legible, accurate, complete, and comprehensive books. Here are a few other concerns that have been voiced. One, county fire protection is provided by volunteer community fire departments. Station 11 is not manned, but has provided a decrease in taxes by affecting the ISO Insurance Services Office ratings. So instead of districts having varying premiums, a consolidated ISO rating saves property owners' money on their insurance premiums. Yet individuals volunteering for local fire service is in at an all-time low. We need incentivized programs to attract volunteers and to man our stations. Another hot topic is that our county has one of the highest spending amounts per student in the state, yet performance is well below the state average. Our state has had an approximate 12% increase in population, yet our county has seen an approximate 12% decrease in population. Our high decline in school enrollment shows a certain demographic leaving our county to seek out better educational opportunities. Three, infrastructure has to be addressed before beautification efforts can begin. Why is the Broad River Project stagnant? In speaking with Mrs. Green two years ago on this, the explanation of delays had to do with supply chain issues and cost of piping. This meeting also included development and zoning officials. In speaking of beautification and growth, our county needs to realize that underlying, non-visible infrastructure issues need to be dealt with first. Also, the $1.4 million surprise payment to the IRS due to dereliction of duty by the county is a major concern. Constituents are concerned that there may be more surprises in store down the road. Thank you for your time.
Randy Bright.
I too have many concerns about our plan. And the first concern is the old adage, if you keep doing and repeating the failures over and over again and expect different results, that's the definition of insanity. Comes in many forms. My point is, we haven't had a comprehensive plan, a strategic plan, or any plan that's been marked by any degree of success in the last 15 years. And I'm talking about the 2010 plan, which is very mirrored by our newest plan, the Strategic Development Plan, which was mentioned, the TY-LIN Strategic Plan. All these failed for some key reasons. The first reason is, and it was mentioned before, there has been no methodology for execution of these plans. Smart methodology, specific, who does what, when, where, and why. We've never seen that. Measurable. We've never attached measuring mechanisms to ensure that our plan is on track and we're going to reach our goal. Is the plan realistic? And is it relevant? Part of the SMART plan. Is it relevant in the fact, is it relevant today? Or relevant to the 2010 plan? Is it achievable? In other words, we had a plan at one time, years ago, that we needed water sewer in all the county. Well, that's not achievable, and we're not even close to being able to achieve that. Not having a SMART plan, specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound, we've never had that before. And that's the only way businesses and whomever execute their plans. If you don't have that, it can't happen. And I understand the plan is not designed to put that in there, but you have to have a separate execution plan right away, or this is a meaningless plan. It's a rudderless ship if you don't have a SMART plan to execute. And we're just wasting our time and money, and we're, this plan is going to fail again. And this is not a time to fail with a plan. There's too much at stake with scout and everything else. The county's growing, the state's growing like crazy, the county's declining like crazy because we failed to plan execution. And a failure to plan is a plan to fail. Let's not do this again. Let's execute the plan. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. And I appreciate everybody that came to speak tonight. Next, we are down to public hearings, none. Number nine, ordinance resolutions and orders. A, first reading by title only, ordinance number 831, in ordinance of adopting the Comprehensive Plan for Fairfield County, South Carolina, 2024, 2034, and other matters related thereto.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. It's by title only, there's no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven to zero. Item B, first reading by title only, ordinance 832, in ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance, number 596, to provide for the zoning reclassification from R-1 Single Family Residential District to RD-1 Rural Residential District for 2.39 acres owned by John Kern at 5994 State Highway 215 South, Jenkinsville, South Carolina, It's been moved and properly seconded. That's a first reading, title only, no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven, zero on ordinance number 832. Item 10, Boarding Commission Minutes, none. Eleven, Boarding Commission Appointments, none. Twelve, Old Business, none. Thirteen, New Business, none. Fourteen, County Administrators Report. Item A is the Council Work Session for February 28, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, just a reminder of your meeting on Wednesday. It's at Midlands Technical College Northeast Campus. It starts at nine. Your agenda is in the packet, so I ask you to review that, so we'll be ready and look forward for a productive day on Wednesday.
Thank you. Next, we are down to item B, Town of Ridgeway Accommodations Tax Reallocation. This is a action item. Mr. Killian.
Yes, sir. In your packet, Ms. Williams has provided you a briefing packet, but the Town of Ridgeway received an accommodations tax allocation from the county for just under $50,000 for the foundation of the museum to support, to resupport the museum. That project came in under budget. They have about $17,000, almost $17,500 left over. They've asked that that, that the council, county council, give them the opportunity to use that money for more restoration on the museum itself, and we would recommend that you do that.
Second it.
It's been moved and properly seconded to reallocate money from the accommodations tax for Town of Ridgeway. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven, zero to reallocate that money. Next, we are down to item C, which is private road acceptance policy, and this is a action item as well. Mr. Killian.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of council, first of all, I may apologize for not getting the actual policy in your packet for you, I think it was provided to you later, earlier today. But I'm going to go through this on a very high level real quick. One of the the questions we've had is, is can we work on those private driveways and common roads? And I think Mr. Morgan has told you on a number of occasions that that's not something that, under state law, you can do. But we did try to find a way to allow you to accept roads into the system that you could maintain them, and that's what this policy is all about. The first section, the biggest change since the draft that you received, as I understand it back in December, was that the roads need to be brought up to an SC DOT standard at the expense of the people that live on the road. That's something that the county should not undertake for them. They should be able to get that road into a condition that is acceptable to you and to DOT, obviously, so that you could maintain a road that is in the condition that you would normally maintain as a public road. It's going to be the applicant's responsibility to get everybody on the road, to agree, to apply for acceptance of the road to the county, to get them to dedicate the right of way to you. You're not going to be buying any right of way. They need to dedicate the sufficient amount of right of way for you to maintain the roadway properly. And let me hit a couple other things. Any drainage easements that need to be done under the design? They need to be able to dedicate those easements to you so that you can get the water off the road. If there are any utilities, fences, gate posts, anything like that that need to be removed, then we need to get them to do that for you. In other words, the road needs to come to you in a condition that you would normally accept anyway, or do when you're working on a public road. And that needs to be done at the homeowner's expense, or everybody that lives on that road or has property on that road's expense. Once they do that, if we go out and inspect the road, public works finds that it isn't the condition we want it, then we've come to council for you to accept that road and take all the legislative action necessary to accept that road into your system for maintenance going forward. One thing that was in your packet is, there's a bill that is floating around the General Assembly that Mr. Morgan found that would allow for these things to happen. It has not passed yet. It's stuck in committee, likely not going to pass this year based on anything of the intel that we've gotten. But that essentially says what we've already been, what we've already known, is that you can't work on private property. If you could work on private property, there wouldn't be a need for that amendment to the, to the state code. So as it stands right now, you can't work on it, and this is a method for folks to be able to get their roads up to speed for you to take it into the system and for you to maintain it going forward. Right now, you just can't do that.
Thank you. Ms. Green.
Yes, of course, this this is a burden, and I think we're all aware of that fact. How are we going to notify the citizens of how this is going to work?
My guess is, you probably get requests, or we get requests all the time for us to work on certain roads, and if it's not our road, then we can advise them then when they call and ask, this is how you can get that road brought into the system for the, for the county to maintain it. But we certainly can get a press release done or something like that to get it out to you.
Yes, I think a press release or something is, would be beneficial, because we have had people who, you know, are really very concerned and would like to know how we're going to handle this. So, yes, please.
Okay, we can do that.
Next, we are down to, oh, I'm sorry. On item C.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven, zero. Item D, which is IRS penalties update. We have received several questions about the IRS and what's being done on it. I'd ask Mr. Killian to provide an update on the IRS. I will say that before Ms. Johnson left, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Williams was doing everything in their power to appeal these penalties. And now that Mr. Killian is here, he has a little bit of information that he can provide on the IRS. Thank you, Mr. Killian.
Yes, sir. Very briefly, we have, first of all, we started looking at our database of employees. One of the questions that is a concern to the IRS is who is eligible for insurance. We think our database may have created some confusion for IRS, and we're going to try to sort that out, which may be the basis for at least part of an appeal. We have reached out to Congressman Norman's office. Ms. Williams has provided them some information that they've requested. I have spoken with his office. They, as you might expect, will tell you the IRS does not respond quickly, but they do expect some sort, whether they submitted that information that we've sent them to the IRS, we're not sure, but they expect at least 30 days before the IRS will even respond to them. And it may be, well, we need more time to look at it, but that, that's one of the things that Congressman Norman's office is working on for us. I've also talked to our auditors, Malden and Jenkins. They have a separate tax division that's based in Macon, and what they do, some of the things they do are IRS appeals. They're going to submit to us a proposal to look at our situation, to see if we, they think we have a defensible appeal, and then maybe appeal that through whatever grounds they think is possible. I have not spoken to the tax division yet. I have spoken to the auditors during ours, but I expect them to send me something tomorrow or Wednesday for us to look at, to at least figure out whether or not we want to engage Malden and Jenkins to do an appeal. They, they have been pretty successful in appeals in the past, but again, they wanted to review our situation to see if what they, what we have is what they consider a defensible, or a fore cause, I think is what they called it, an appeal. But we are working that angle through our auditors, and hopefully, we'll have some success with that. But we, we are working every angle we know of at this point.
Next, we are down to Clerk Counsel's Report, none. Item 16, County Council Time, any council members wish to be heard? Mr. Roof.
Just, just one thing. I talked to Ms. Williams right before the meeting tonight about the audit update, and she said it's on schedule for March, I think you said.
Yes, sir. If I may, I meant to bring that up during my report as well. March 11th is still the target date. We have a draft in hand that we're reviewing now. But after the audit, another one of the concerns is the lateness of our audits the last number of years. After the audit, Malden and Jenkins is going to come in and help us look at our closeout processes so that we can have our books closed and ready for them to audit as they need to be at the end of the year.
Anything else from any council member? Ms. Waringe.
I just wanted to address you, well, not address you, but I wanted to do this, this little update. I had talked with Jamie Webb, who is our Fairfield County Fire Chief, and I said, please give me an update on the situation of the fire departments. And he said, we have six- said, we have six full-time firefighters. We have one part-time firefighter. He is at the Lebanon Fire Department. He said, we have eight without fire departments, without people working at them, but that includes the substations. I did not ask him how many substations that we had, but all total, we have 15 fire stations and substations in our county, but seven of them have somebody working either full-time or part-time. He told me that we had a countywide ISO rating of five, and I think we already knew that. And you get that by living within five road miles of a station. My concern is the western part of the county, Dark Corner, USA, but he said that Jenkinsville has a full-time firefighter, Lebanon has the part-time firefighter, and the Jenkinsville person goes between Jenkinsville and Blair and Fishterville, checking the equipment, checking the buildings. And he said if there was a fire while he was at one of those fire stations, he would use their trucks, and he would go from there because they're in work in order. He said that we have received, it's in-house, the used ladder truck and the rescue truck that he was able to get for the county, and he said they're getting the decals and setting it up now. So we have those two things here, here now. And he said that the three new fire trucks that were ordered, one should be here in October of our new fire trucks. And of course, the other two are on the back order, whatever. That is, I know it's not a perfect situation, but it's a little bit better situation for us out in that end of the county, because we have a lot more other, other situations. I mean, they have a lot more people and a lot more fire departments everywhere else, but at least they're working on us out there. But the one thing he said he was proud of, that last year, he did 241 safety home visits, and that's where they go into the homes and install the free fire alarms in the bedrooms. And he said so far this year, they had done 83. He's very proud of that. And so I urge you, if it's your children, have your grandchildren, or your elderly parents, or your grandparents, everybody in Fairfield County could have free spoke alarms in their bedrooms. If they will just call, give them the name, give them the address, telephone number that's good to get in touch with, and the number of bedrooms that they have in their home. Encourage everyone to do that, because it is a free service, and it could save your life. That's all I got.
Thank you, Ms. Waringen, for that update. Two other questions I received this week, and I want to answer them. One of them was, would the council provide any more funding for the farmer's market? And just want to put on record that the budget will be coming up in April, and that is something that council can decide in April, if they want to give the farmer's market any more allocation than what's already been stated. The second question someone wanted to know was the wastewater treatment plant and where we stand on it. I might ask Mr. C.D. Rose from the Joint Water Authority for Fairfield County, Town of Windsboro, Ridgeway, just to kind of, if he can give a brief statement on where we stand with the wastewater treatment plant and the Joint Water Authority. And I apologize if I put you on the spot.
Not at all, not at all. I'm happy to give you a quick update. So, you know, throughout 2023, the joint system and its members, the county, Windsboro, and Ridgway, actually made some pretty good progress. We were, as you well know, we secured a skip grant to fund what we are calling the Windsboro Connector, which will kind of redirect some existing flow from the county's industrial parks, down a new line on Peach Road, and up to Windsboro's Treatment Plant, up 321 to Windsboro's Treatment Plant. And that will, it will give the county a lot more wastewater capacity to continue to grow those existing industrial parks, and also that kind of Peach Road area in general. Windsboro currently has about a half million gallons of capacity in its plant, but due to some capacity restrictions in the line that runs along Highway 34, you weren't able to actually access that capacity. So just by the sheer fact that you now are, well, when that project is complete, will have access to that half million gallons of capacity is, in and of itself, a fairly big deal. Perhaps, more importantly, though, it was a big step in, in making the new plant feasible. You know, we're gonna build this big shiny new plant out on the Broad River. We're gonna build a transmission line that runs out to that plant, but the plant doesn't do anybody any good if there's no wastewater for it to treat. And you need a, kind of a minimum amount of wastewater in order to make those plants run and run efficiently and cost effectively. So the other thing that the Windsboro Connector will allow is for the county to continue to grow its industrial parks, continue to grow kind of the southern Fairfield County area, and most importantly, continue to grow the wastewater capacity down in that area. We ultimately need to get to about somewhere between 300,000 and 400,000 gallons of capacity that's going to run through that transmission line out to that plant on the Broad River. But if you don't have anywhere to send it in the interim and to treat the wastewater that's generated by all of those customers, then you don't have any way to kind of bridge the gap between where we are now and where we need to be when the new plant comes online. So in addition to receiving that grant, which was, really, I can't overstate how big of a deal that was, we also negotiated some contracts between the county and the joint system and Windsboro to fund that line, the, the portions of, or the cost of the line that is not gonna be covered by the grant, and also for Windsboro to operate that line until the new plant comes online, you know, several years down the road. We have also, kind of where we are right now, is we are negotiating some amendments to agreements that we've previously entered into that deal with, you know, the reallocation of 208 management areas within the county. 208 plans are these kind of, you know, nebulous documents. They do a lot of things, but they are really long-term wastewater planning documents, and they designate particular entities that are responsible for long-term wastewater planning within individual areas. Right now, Windsboro is, is called the management agency for most of southern Fairfield County, at least west of I-77. As the joint system steps in to own all of those wastewater assets down there in that general vicinity, and ultimately, you know, customers down there will be customers of the joint system once it's up and running, it just makes sense that the joint system be the management agency for that area. And so we are, kind of as we stand here today, we are trying to finalize some of those agreements that we've been kind of negotiating over the last few months. I hope that that's going to be done in the very near future. And once that is done, the immediate next step is to apply to the Central Midlands Council of Governments, and specifically their EPAC Committee, which is kind of their Committee of Professionals, Engineers, and Utility Professionals, for them to approve our requested amendments to the 208 plan, which will include both that reallocation of management areas, and it will also include the kind of general location of the plant out on the Broad River. My hope is that we will make that application sometime this spring, and we'll be in front of them either late spring or early summer to start that process. And it's a multi-step process, as you would imagine anything that deals with a council of governments and DEHAC and state agencies would typically be. But the, the important thing is that we, we start down that road and get started. The reason it's so important that we do that is because the 208 process is really the prerequisite for finalizing that 208 process, is the prerequisite for applying for our construction and discharge permits for the new plant. The lead time on those is, is long, 18 to 24 months typically. And so the sooner we get through that 208 process, the sooner we apply for those permits, and the sooner we receive them, which is, which is very important. But I also don't want you to leave here thinking that, you know, that we really need to start construction on the plant tomorrow. We really don't. If we had everything in line, if we had all of our permits, we would not start moving dirt tomorrow. As I said at the beginning of this discussion, you need a certain amount of capacity, a certain amount of wastewater to run that plant. And so we really need to get to the point where we have developed, or through industrial parks or through general development, you have built, built on the capacity that would currently go to that plant, the new plant, which is really just the capacity generated from within existing wastewater, I'm sorry, existing industrial parks. So there's going to be a, you know, several-year process of, you know, the county having new manufacturers coming to industrial parks, perhaps new residential subdivisions, perhaps new businesses. All of that generates wastewater. All of that is going to, in the interim, go to Windsboro for treatment, and then ultimately would be diverted to the new plant once we reach that threshold, as I said, somewhere between that 300,000 and 400,000 gallons of, of wastewater that's being generated. So we are certainly moving along. We accomplished more in 2023 than we did in probably all of the, you know, four or five years prior to that combined. And, you know, we're off to the races in 2024. There's lots of work to do, but we, we are indeed making good progress.
Thank you so much for that presentation. You know, I think sometimes people, or citizens, or, or anyone, kind of, when it's not moving along fast, you know, they think that the council or the county, or the Town of Windsboro, or the Town of Winds, Ridgeway, is dragging their feet and not trying to get this thing moved along. But you can assure us that work's being done on this every day, and things have to happen to make this go into effect, this wastewater treatment plant.
That's absolutely true. I mean, you know, the, what I always say about joint systems is they exist so that different local governments can come together to do something that none of them could do on their own. And this is really the absolute prime example of that. If you didn't have some way to, to build the capacity that's ultimately gonna go to the plant before it is completed, it would be very, very difficult to get this project off the ground. And so although Windsboro may not be writing the big checks that y'all are writing, they are contributing in their own way by agreeing to treat that waste until the new plant comes online, and allow you to build that customer base for the joint system. I really can't stress enough how important that is. Y'all, obviously, are bringing lots and lots and lots of money to the table. I always said about this project that the, the money was the insurmountable goal. Well, we have surmounted the insurmountable goal at this point. There are just, you know, there's only so many sources of 40, 50, 60 million dollars out there for a rural county. So we have, you know, we're over that hump by and large. So as we come together, we are accomplishing something that neither you nor Windsboro nor Ridgway could do on your own. We're coming together to get it done.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other council members wish to speak? Next, we are down to item 17, executive session. In executive session, item A, receipt of legal advice regarding the lawsuit Town of Windsboro versus Fairfield County, number 2022 dash CP dash 20 dash 00105, and other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege pursuant to South Carolina Code 30 dash 4 dash 70A2. Item B, receipt of legal advice and discussion of negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements with the Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System pursuant to South Carolina Code 30 dash 4 dash 70A2. It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero. We are now in executive session. We are now in executive session.
Okay, we are back from executive session. Do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to come out of executive session. To put on the record, there was no vote or action taken in executive session. All in favor of coming out of executive session?
Aye.
All oppose? Let the record reflect, seven zero. We are now out of executive session. Is there any other motions? It's been moved and properly seconded to adjourn. I don't think any council members It's been moved and properly seconded to adjourn. I don't think any council members have any discussion on it. All those in favor of adjournment?
Mr. Chair.
Aye.